Send him some numbers on some stuff, so he's mulling those over. So, um, did Jeff tell you that when they were out there touring, they wanted to get a site plan?
Yeah, well, uh, yes.
Okay.
Good to go.
All right, good morning, everyone. Let's call to order our Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, March thirty first.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, now our pledge of allegiance. All right, our vacation today is led by Reverend Bob Colrick of the First Christian Church in Ottawa. Go ahead, Reverend.
Good morning, everyone. I'm and Pastor Bob Colrick, pastor interim pastor of the First Christian Church here in town. It is good to be with you. If you would please let us bow in prayer. God, we want to thank you for joining us in this time of meeting. We thank you for each and every person gathered here. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings. And God, we thank you for the measure of help you grant us. We thank you for friendship and the way you sustain and help us. And we thank you, God, for life itself. We thank you, God, for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. And thank you for the freedoms we enjoy. Most of all, God, we thank you for loving us and for your boundless and gracious nature. God, in the holy scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities so that there might be peace and order and justice. God, grant these wise and dedicated decision makers the knowledge, the understanding, and insight that they need to make needed and just decisions. We pray that you would give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our residents. It is our prayer, God, that you would grant this group the ability to work together in harmony. We pray for the agenda that is set before them today. We pray that you would enable those gathered here to make good choices and judgments for the good of our community. This we pray, in the name of the one who came, that we might have life and have it abundantly. Amen.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Correspondence organizational business today will be considering April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Anyone from the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Center on the call? Catherine, maybe?
We were supposed to have, um, Carol on the call. Carol, are you with us? No?
Nope. All right, well, we usually read the proclamation. Would you mind doing that?
I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual trauma and abuse is widespread and impacts every person in the community. And whereas sexual assault and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show one in five women and one in sixty-seven men will be assaulted at some point in their lives. And that two out of three sexual assaults are never reported to police. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before age eighteen. And whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, and youth ages twelve to seventeen were two-point-five times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas on campus, one in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas the effort, the effects of human trafficking reach far beyond its victims and perpetrators, causing disruptions in our schools, places of work, and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, Franklin County, Kansas, proclaims the month of April twenty twenty-one as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This year, SAM is celebrating its twentieth anniversary. The theme for this year's campaign is Consent is for Everyone. The campaign calls on partners and community members to help expand sexual assault prevention efforts and ensure the next generation fosters attitudes that promote consent, equality, and respect. We join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual trauma and abuse. April is SAM, and each of, each of the year is opportunity to change for the future, create change for the future.
All righty. This is a proclamation, so I guess we need to vote to adopt it.
I will make a motion to adopt the re- the-
Proclamation?
Proclamation. Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
All right, thank, yes, thank you. Our consent agenda today would consist of meeting minutes for March twenty-fourth, tax change orders in the amount of negative twenty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars, thirty-two cents, claim vouchers. Uh, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars, sixteen cents, and payroll is one million, one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars, eighty-four cents. Their motion to approve a consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All righty, for a second?
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Janet, did we have public comment?
We do not have any public comment.
Our first item of business is to consider renewing appointments to the Fourth Judicial District Community Corrections Advisory Board. Dustin Browning is on the call.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Uh, today we have, uh, two folks seeking reappointment to our advisory board. Uh, first is Taylor Jones. She's the Director of Community Services at the Willow. Uh, she currently serves as the Chair of this advisory board, and she's been a member since twenty nineteen. Also is Ken Halliburton. He's the Director of Juvenile Services here. He currently serves as the Secretary of the Board, and he's been an active, uh, part of it since twenty sixteen. Uh, these are both two-year terms that would expire in March, uh, two thousand twenty-three. So I'll stand for any questions at this time.
Like, uh, we've been active members, and, uh, you think they'd be good for reappointments? Looking for a motion to, uh, renew the appointments of Taylor Jones and Ken Halliburton to the Fourth Judicial District Community Corrections Advisory Board. Any would like to make that motion?
Motion to appro-
Second. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Well, thanks, Dustin. Our second item of business is to consider approving solicitation of bids for the jail boiler. Brandon Sands, our maintenance director, is on the call.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, yeah, just, uh, seeking approval to, um, solicit bids for the, uh, replacement of the boiler, um, in the jail. Uh, this, this boiler, uh, provides heat for, uh, the west end of the building. Um, there's a, um, large, uh, hundred-gallon, uh, water heater that's sitting right there next to it that is also due for, uh, replacement. So the budget price that we've been given, um, for this project covers the replacement of both of those, um-
Pieces of equipment. So hoping to get those, uh, get those bids rolling in and, uh, see where we can, uh, where we can land on there and see if we can get these projects knocked out.
Um, I'll chime in. This, obviously, this is one of the things that was pointed out to all of you on your facilities tour there during the last study session. And, uh, I believe I've said this before, but Janet and I have done a budget analysis, and our budget's in good shape with where our transfers would be, that we're going to go ahead and recommend moving forward with, uh, pretty well all of the projects that were identified during that tour. This, of course, is the first of which, and the others will be, you know, coming in the next few weeks. But certainly, the financially, we're in good shape to do this, and it's certainly a need there in the jail, so.
I like the fact that we get things done before it's a crisis, comes to a crisis point. And, yeah, or we keep putting them off, so all of a sudden we have a whole bunch of them at the same time.
That's right.
This, uh, says, uh, solicit bids for replacement of the boiler and water heater. It would just be a boiler, wouldn't it? If our water heaters are-
Um, so, yeah, so the, the way the system is set up, this, uh, this boiler, um, it is a hot water boiler, but it supplies all of the, um, uh, handles the heat, um, for the, uh, air in the jail. Um, and then there's a separate water heater right next to it that will handle all the, um, water for the showers and sinks.
Okay, but that's not one of them that we replaced?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's not one that we replaced already. I'm sorry.
I got you.
The, yeah, the water heater, heater that we replaced, I think, last year or so, was on the other end of the building in the basement.
Got you. This one's on the first floor. I'm with you now, so. All right, any other questions for Brandon? The motion would be to approve the solicitation of bids to replace the boiler and water heater in the jail.
I'll make that motion to approve.
All righty.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our third item of business would be to consider a proposal for engineering inspection on a bridge deck improvement.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this is, this project is to repair the bridge deck on Jackson Road, uh, near the Miami County line. This bridge deck has, uh, been something that we've talked about, uh, frequently here recently. Uh, and I have a proposal here before you from CFS engineers to do a design. And then, uh, once the project is, uh, bid and construction is ready to start, there's also a construction inspection component of this contract. What we anticipate doing is much like we did on the Colorado Bridge, just north of Butler, where we will, uh, chip out the spalled concrete, uh, down below the, the rebar. They will patch that with, uh, additional concrete to tie that in, and then they will come back and put a, uh, inch and a half, uh, high-strength, low-permeability concrete on top to cap that bridge deck, which should, uh, alleviate the problems that we're having currently. So we've got this, uh, proposal in front of us. Uh, the, the contract with CFS has, has both parts, the design, which is a lump sum fee of eighteen thousand, and then the inspection is a time and expense contract up to a max of seventy-four thousand. So, uh, if the project, we're, we're unsure un- until they get through with the design, uh, what the, the, uh, construction estimates are going to be, and the time allotted to do that work, uh, is still to be determined. We think it's going to be in the two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range to, uh, to do this work. And so that inspection piece covers the worst-case scenario, if you will. And so we will monitor that part, uh, to ensure that, you know, hours are, are spent appropriately on that. In the meantime, uh, we've got crews that are going to, uh, we're going to try to put some asphalt in some of those worst areas, to make the driving surface a little bit better for the traveling public. And we're also going to put, uh, some signage on either end of the bridge, uh, letting them know that we're going to have a, a project coming up this, uh, sometime in the next few months to fully repair that, so that it alerts the, the folks that are driving down that road that something better is ahead. And so what I'm here asking you to do is to kick this off with, uh, uh, the design. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah.
I know you want to say something about this one.
Well, I appreciate David falling through on this. I mean, I'm glad we brought it to a good discussion when we had it up there. And I think if I remember the original price, possibly was going to be close to three-quarters of a million dollars. So I congratulate you for getting with Cook, Flat, and Stubble and coming up with a good issue. And I'm sure what they're talking about, none of us will ever deal with it again. You know, and it, and it, it's just, it's bad. We got, and just like Mr. Harris made it when he was up there. We wait two more years, we may have to spend that two quarters, or more, you know, by then. So I, I, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion to proceed.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris? Commissioner Dickinson?
Commissioner Dunn, yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Fourth item of business is to consider approving a roadway repair agreement.
So, this is a, um, this is related to the flood damage from twenty nineteen. Um, if you recall, KDOT has approved a, a couple of different projects for reimbursement. Uh, one of them, uh, is getting ready to bid, uh, later in April, uh, which is the, uh, the concrete structure on, uh, Virginia Road just north of Lane. Uh, this project that's before you today is, um, actually three different sites, one being Colorado Road, um, just south of Pomona, uh, Idaho Road, uh, south of sixty-eight, and, and it also includes the, uh, all the, the immediate repair work that we did on Virginia, we were just north of, uh, just north of Lane. And so, uh, KDOT, we've submitted all of the paperwork, uh, to KDOT. Uh, they're ready to go, but this agreement is kind of the last bit of information that they need to, uh, submit that for reimbursement. So it's, it's a, it's a bit of a formality. Everything has been signed off on, uh, and this is the same type of agreement that we signed for the, uh, the project that's getting ready to bid here in a few weeks. And so I would ask, um, uh, for you to approve getting that signed.
All right, pretty straightforward. Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion authorizing the execution of the roadway repair agreement between KDOT, Franklin County, for the emergency repairs on Idaho Road, Colorado Road, and Virginia Road?
I'm not going to be hoggy, but I'm going to make a motion on this one also. Thanks again, David, basically on the one down my lane. Uh, it, it has to do with the road, but it also has to do with emergency. Every time it flooded down there, we had to get ammo because to come up out of Anderson County, the service side end of the county. And, uh, plus that, Dave, and, uh, we spent a ton of money over the last few years. Keep putting it back, keep putting it back, keep putting it back. And hopefully, from the design and, and all of it, maybe we'll see an end to that with this, plus getting the, the money to help with it. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You can tell the government's involved by how long this contract is, how much paperwork is involved, but I will second the project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Fifth item is to consider awarding the twenty twenty-one dust control contract.
Yeah, so, um, on early in March, we, uh, approved soliciting bids for, uh, the twenty-twenty-one dust control project. Uh, we opened those bids last Friday. We had, we actually had two bidders this time, which is a, uh, which is a good thing. Um, and Scottwood Industries, who has historically, um, been successful in, in these bids, again, uh, was a little bitter. Uh, their price this year for the, uh, magnesium chloride was, uh, one dollar and eight cents, which is up one penny over last year. Uh, and, and looking back, uh, the last few years, it's risen by a penny each year per gallon. So, uh, I still feel good about those, those prices. The, uh, the job they do for us is, is good as well, uh, and I would ask, uh, to move forward with this project.
I got a dollar nine cents on our, did you die?
I'm sorry.
Is that accurate?
It, it's a dollar nine. Last year it was a dollar eight. I looked at the wrong line. Sorry.
You're fine. Well, this one's straightforward. We do it every year.
Last year, did they end up wedding, or did we end up wedding?
We didn't have to last year because of, uh, moisture occurring right before we did the project. And so, uh, we'll, we're, we're going to hope for that again this year. Um, and if, if not, we will do the wedding.
Of course, most, if not all of this is a pass-through cost to, to program that we, you can participate in, and we get reimbursed, so. That's important to note. Would anyone care to make a motion, uh, awarding the twenty twenty-one dust control to Scottwood Industries the amount of a dollar nine a gallon?
I'll make that motion to approve. Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Sixth item of business is a rezoning application. Uh, Deanne Farrell, our Planning and Building Administrative Assistant, will tell us about this rezoning application. Good morning.
The first one is Mr. Kyle would like to rezone about just shy of fourteen acres to grant the land and to a family member, I think a grandchild, for them to build a new home. And then he will retain the remaining agricultural land with the existing residence on it. The planning commission did recommend approval of the application, and so staff does recommend that the county commissioners accept the recommendation and approve the rezoning as well.
All right. Very common currents. Any questions on this one?
Yes, I feel like it's hilarious. All the years we've been here, and the rest of the board's been really good about trying to preserve agriculture ground, and this is a good sign of that, where they're just breaking off a small, and a land to everybody's favor by building a new home on that. And, and chances on that other mount probably wasn't agriculture anyway. I mean, you accept it, pin zone that, so. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right.
Second. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson? Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. And our seventh item is also a rezoning application.
Um, again, Mr. Kyle is requesting to rezone about ten-point-three-two acres to grant to another grandchild in order for them to construct a new, or I'm sorry, it's with the existing residence and outbuildings. And then, um, Mr. Kyle, again, will keep the remaining agricultural land. And the planning commission did recommend approval of this rezoning as well. And so staff just requests that the county commissioners accept their recommendation.
All right.
That's one way to keep your grandchildren close to you. I will make that motion. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our eighth item would consider approving, uh, the replacement of vehicle totaled in a crash. Sheriff Richards is here.
Morning, commissioners. Um, as you can see from the, uh, the cover sheet that was provided, we did have a patrol vehicle that was involved in a crash, um, at the end of a pursuit. Um, just for information and educational purposes, all of our, our staff, um, does go through emergency vehicle operations course, which, uh, trains on the, uh, the, the skills to, to drive at high speeds, plus all the legal implications as well. And then they also, we also send it everyone through, um, TVI training, which is Tactical Vehicle Intervention. Um, the reason for that training is to end a pursuit before it gets, um, to a much more dangerous level. And, uh, this per, this person was invol-, uh, has received both of those trainings. This pursuit ended up being that it went off-road when they, when the suspect went into a field. It was muddy. The vehicle spun sideways, and then our car also hit that mud and was not able to stop, and then hit, hit that car. K-CAMP did come down and evaluate the vehicle, and, um, they determined that they were going to total the vehicle. So they did, um, they totaled it out and sent the county a check for seven thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. We did ask, um, if we could, uh, at least try to get, we didn't believe that that amount that they gave us, um, also compensated for the equipment that was in that vehicle, so we asked if we could, um, get that, get whatever salvageable equipment out of that vehicle. Uh, K-CAMP agreed to, uh, pay the tow bill for us to get that up to TFM, who had done the installation. And they took out the equipment that, that they could and off of that vehicle. And then, um, so we retained that, and then K-CAMP also paid to tow that vehicle back, um, to our lot. And it's, uh, and they paid TFM for their time to, uh, to do, to take that equipment out. So, um, the replacement vehicle that, what we're asking for is to, um, we looked at being able to, um, to use that equipment again, um, that was, that was removed from the vehicle. Most of that, uh, equipment would, will work in a Ford, um, the Explorer, um, interceptor, will not work in the Dodge, um, in the Dodge Durango. We do have a staff vehicle that is a, uh, that's a, that's the Explorer that this equipment can go into. That is a cheaper way for us to do the replacement is to, uh, we can get that Durango, equip it as a staff vehicle, um, which has some lights and, and radio in it. But it would not have the light bar and the markings and all that, and that equipment can be used on that Explorer that we already have, and that will end up being, um, cheaper than just purchasing a, uh, a full vehicle for patrol again. So, um, so that is what we're requesting. You can see on the estimates, um, for that vehicle, forty thousand, sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, and then, um, having another three hundred and seventy-five dollars to, um, get some, a couple pieces of that equipment put on that Explorer that we would not be able to do ourselves, so.
Is this one of our older vehicles then? Since reimbursement was not very much?
It, it was high, it, it was a patrol vehicle that had pretty high miles, so.
So if the board, uh, would like to move forward with this, we would recommend using the risk management fund. When we get reimbursement checks from K-CAMP, they go in that fund. Um, the balance in there currently is very healthy, and so we, from a financial perspective, this is easily doable.
Likely give us a head start on next year's vehicle replacement, so. Put a new one in the fleet a little early, but. How many vehicles are in your fleet?
Total, um, it's, I did not bring that with me, but it's thirty. I think it's around thirty vehicles, twenty-eight, thirty vehicles. I'm not for sure.
All right, any questions for Jeff? Would care to make a motion authorizing the purchase of a replacement vehicle for the sheriff's office for the total purchase price of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred nine dollars, ninety-eight cents?
I make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Now, the staff reports. Derek?
Thanks, Cole. Um, just been, um, got a lot of projects in the hopper, so kind of been planning out. The intention was to plan out my next few months, but in reality, I think I've kind of planned out the rest of my year, and I just kind of walk, want to walk through the board what that looks like. I will continue working with Brandon on the various capital improvement projects that we've identified. Um, I've had a couple meetings with David. I'm gonna meet with him again tomorrow to ensure that we try and stay on top of the road and bridge projects that we've identified, as well as facility improvements. Uh, we still want to come in front of you sooner rather than later with like a site plan at a study session to discuss his yard out there. Um, still waiting for more details on President Biden's stimulus package, but once that comes down, obviously that, you know, that is, uh, something that Janet and I will smother, and, uh, that ties into the 2022 budget, which her and I have also started working on, um, and still trying to figure out the details of the new legislation. And we just want to know what rules we have to play by here. So, we're working on that. Countywide software, as I've said several times, is a massive project that we'll continue to move forward on. Um, and then there are a couple of other fairly substantial miscellaneous projects that will be in front of you in due time. Um, and then, of course, I don't talk about it as much, but we still are in a pandemic. And so, uh, having said that, I'll transition to Casey so that she can give a vaccine update, unless you have any questions for me.
I have one question. I, I heard that through the state, that the state is, say, trying to put aside 25% of the money they're getting from the government to reimburse, um, companies, businesses that had shut down. And they are also, in part of that, they're asking, they want to ask the counties to set aside 25% of their money also. Um, any comments? I'm like, they're gonna give us money and then take it away?
Yeah. Say, we, we haven't been given specific instruction regarding that. My understanding of this particular stimulus was that it was gonna flow from the federal government straight to us. And so, I don't know that the state will technically be able to require us to do anything, but if they do have recommendations, those haven't, I mean, they have not communicated directly with my office about that. So, but that'll be, the, the one piece of good news, uh, that I think we know at this point, is that I don't believe the funds have to be spent until like the end of '24. I mean, part of the problem with the CARES Act was that the turnaround time was just so fast. If we've got a couple or even a few years to, to plan, that in and of itself will be so much better and will lead to so much more thoughtful, uh, use of those funds. I'm very happy with what we did with the CARES Act, but if we have more time to breathe, then, and certainly, I think, will be easier on all of us. So...
Good morning, commissioners. So, I just want to give just a quick update that doesn't have to do with COVID or vaccines. Um, our first quarter employee newsletter is gonna go out today. Um, so watch for that in your email. And then also, the month of April is National County Government Month. Um, so we are going to do, um, some information about all the departments on our website and social media and educate our constituents on, um, you know, how all of our employees impact their lives on a daily basis. So, vaccine, um, we have administered 7,715 total doses of the vaccine. 4,630 of those are first doses, 2,920 of those are second doses, and 165 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Um, we will give 200 more second doses this week and another 100 first doses this week. And, um, as we have talked about in the past, we have started finding out on Wednesdays what, how many doses we'll get the following week. So, sometime either late Wednesday afternoon or early Thursday, the health department will find out how many we're getting next week. So, last week, um, we found out that we weren't gonna get any doses of vaccine this week. Um, and I, because the state is pushing those to our community partners. Um, but I know Nick made some phone calls, and I'm sure he can talk more about this, but we did end up getting, um, this week, 700 total doses, first doses, and 500 second doses. Those will be administered next week. So, next week's gonna be a really big week for the health department. They do plan on administering all of those at the bottle house during the week. We won't have to have a Saturday clinic, but...
This is the week that they said that we weren't gonna get any?
Right.
Oh, wow.
But, yes. So, that's, that's great news. We thought we weren't gonna get any, and now we're getting 700. So, that's great news. Um, we do, we are prioritizing people based on age now. Um, so, I know the health department is currently scheduling individuals born in 1961. And as of yesterday afternoon, we still have approximately 1,800 people on the list, but I know it continues to grow every day because people call in or sign up online and decide it is right for them now. So, any questions about that?
Casey, do you want to talk just a little bit about the online portal? I don't know that we've ever detailed that for the board.
Yeah. So, um, a few weeks ago, Tom had been working on this for a long time. Tom Winter, um, designed, um, basically a survey for people to go on our website and opt-in to get the vaccine. So, instead of trying to calm down the phone lines, um, that vaccine line that we had was ringing off the hook. Um, people can now go to our website, click on that link, and they just put in their name, their date of birth, their contact information, and then that prioritizes them on our list based on their date of birth, and then they'll get a call from the health department, um, to set an appointment when it's their turn. So...
And as of Monday, anybody over 16 is eligible?
Yes. Sorry, I forgot to mention that. As of Monday, the governor opened up anybody over the age of 16, which is why we now are just prioritizing based on date of birth.
One of the things that prompted us to move towards an online portal, we, we were working in that direction anyway, but, um, but when Larry went on his leave of absence, Dee Farrell was actually the employee we had answering those vaccine calls and getting people scheduled. I mean, health department gets a ton of other calls pertaining to the vaccine, but if you were a citizen and you wanted on the list, you would call Dee. Larry left and, and certainly made the decision that, that Dee and I needed to focus on filling his enormous shoes. And so, we felt the time was right to go ahead and go live with that portal. And it's been fantastic. We haven't gotten complaints about it. I think it's similar to what we've done with the burn permits. And so, people in the community have gotten used to it, user-friendly system. And I think it's a good template for how we can do things moving forward. So, been pleased with that. And it's certainly cut down on the number of calls that we've gotten about getting on that list.
And our pharmacies are just getting them too. And they don't have, because everybody's eligible, you, they don't have to be following our...
They don't have one?
Have to be following our...
Right, right, right. They don't have to follow the phases.
Do you say some of the vaccines that would otherwise go to us are being pushed out to community partners? That'd be the private businesses?
As in, yes. I know Advent Health Ottawa was going to get some, which they may have ended up, if they, the community partners chose to push those back to the state, then they came to us. Um, so, that's how we, and I know that 100 of those doses of the 700 actually came from Coffee County, because they weren't going to use those. So, um, Nick could probably give you better detailed information on where all those doses...
Are they all...
No, they're all Moderna. Yeah. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Nick, are you on it?
Can you hear me now? All right. Um, as Casey talked about, we, uh, did get 600 doses from the state, 700 or, um, 100 from Coffee County that they couldn't, um, push out. So, we were able to get those, uh, as, at the, at the beginning of, or Wednesday of last week, we were not allocated any doses. They said it was a clerical error after we talked to the state, and they, uh, were able to take care of us and give us those 600. So, it was good to be able to do that. As of right now, we also, in our county, for next week, we're getting 1,000 doses. So, you have your pharmacies, um, Ottawa Family Physicians, and, um, that group getting 400 doses. So, we are seeing more and more getting pushed to the community partners, and that's one of the things that the state's wanting to do. So, that's, that's a good, a good push for us because it gives us opportunities for, for people to get them other places as well. Um, we, uh, currently only have nine positive cases in our community, which is still bound from, uh, continuing to stay down from what we'd like to see it. Uh, with that, we're continuing to see a decrease in testing. Yesterday, we, um, did three tests. So, that, uh, is, is kind of disheartening that we're not seeing people get tested, but I'm hopeful that that's a sign that we're, we're starting to get ahead of it. Um, really not a lot more to talk about with the, uh, with COVID, except for we're continuing to get doses pushed out as quick as possible. We've got, we've reallocated staff, um, from different locations where they were busy before. We're now to making the phone calls. One of the things we continue to see is we, on that list that we have, we schedule one person in about every three to four calls. So, we're seeing people that's already gotten the vaccine, people that have opted out of getting the vaccine after putting themselves on the list. So, it takes about three to four calls to schedule one person. So, with those numbers, um, we're seeing a lot of work coming out of the health department, and they're doing a good job in getting these people scheduled in a timely fashion. Um, transitioning from the health department, I do want to let the commission know that today is Monica Finch's last day at the dispatch center. She's retiring. Um, we're not able to do a big, uh, retirement celebration for her at this time, but as soon as COVID allows, we will bring her back and, and get her the, uh, the, the celebration that she needs for the times that she's worked for us. So, Monica's last day is today. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Not here, Danny. We appreciate the update, Nick.
Thank you.
Sheriff Richards?
I wanted to give a, a update. I mean, I think I'd talked, uh, past about having a K-9 training facility. And, um, we, what we are looking to do, this will be completely funded through the Sheriff's Foundation. And the Sheriff's Foundation did, as a reminder, did also receive a grant, a matching grant from the Gopert Foundation to help, uh, offset some of the costs for our K-9 training facility as well. Um, we are getting ready to, uh, to start the first phase of, of that construction, which is going to be, uh, putting a fenced-in area inside the, uh, it's toward the south end of our firing range. Um, and so, that area is, hopefully the fence will start going up here in the next couple of weeks. We've already, we're starting to get the, the, the ground ready for it. And then we're working on, uh, getting the actual equipment, the obstacles and stuff, um, getting that, um, getting that purchased in here so that we can get that installed as well. Um, so, it's an exciting time for our K-9, uh, team, and hopefully we'll be, uh, into the, as we get into the summer months, we'll have that all ready and, and up, and up and running. And, uh, then we would invite you guys to come out and kind of see what it is that those dogs are doing, um, for us. The equipment that we get for that, um, it's gonna cost roughly around $20,000 for, for that equipment. And I, I know that sounds like, um, a lot of money, because, because it is, and that you can get some obstacle, K-9 obstacle course stuff for a lot cheaper. But those are more for like show dogs and things like that, and not for working, uh, working dogs. And so, the equipment that the foundation has approved for us to purchase is, um, it is the, it's the, it's DOD quality. So, it's the stuff that, uh, that the military working dogs use, and then a lot of other, uh, police K-9 units across the country. Uh, this is the, this is the course that they use as well. So, and we're, we are excited, um, about that, uh, moving forward. Um, a while back, I had mentioned that we've kind of done a little bit, not a complete restructure, but some restructure of our drug enforcement. Um, the way that we do that, we have, um, through our patrol, we have Community Action Team. Uh, we call it CAT. And those are people that we've sent to, um, additional training on, uh, drug interdiction and doing some drug investigations and interviewing and things like that. And we also have a detective that we have on our, um, multi-county drug task, for the Northeast Kansas Drug Task Force. Uh, I just wanted to give an update as to kind of how successful some of that has been, in that this, uh, just within the, the past week here, we have, um, we've worked those, the CAT and the task force have worked together and made some pretty substantial, um, seizures, um, here in Franklin County. And so, um, that's a, that's a good thing, but it also just kind of reminds us that we, we do have a drug problem. And so, uh, those things sometimes come to light once you have the resources and the tools to go start enforcing that. So, it may look a little bad at first when you start seeing that, okay, you guys have this many arrests and this much, you've seized this much drugs. But, um, they didn't come here because we have the enforcement team. The enforcement team just kind of exposed it, and is starting to work those things out. So, those, um, that's a positive thing for both of those units that we have. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about is that this last Saturday, we did do a saturation patrol. Um, if anybody was out driving Saturday evening, they probably saw vehicle stops somewhere. Um, we, between, uh, the sheriff's office, Ottawa Police Department, um, our, our task force guys and highway patrol, we had an additional, um, I think 24 units that were out on top of what we would normally have on patrol in the county. So, we, it was very successful. We, we made several arrests, uh, including DUI arrests and drug arrests. Um, the focus of that is because the weather's starting to get nice, people are starting to get out. Um, and for some reason, there's been like an uptick in DUIs, so we wanted to really hit it so we can kind of send a message that we're, that we're serious about traffic safety, and we wanted to keep, keep those drivers off the streets. So, hopefully running, rolling into prom season as well, this will, this will kind of hopefully put a damper on some of that type of activity. So, that's all I have for you guys this morning. I have, answer any questions you may have.
Gunn, I had, had heard about people, a lot of people getting tickets. And I said, well, maybe it was Palm Sunday, worried about people going out and celebrating Palm Sunday, but yeah. Um, the drug that you are, are they people driving through the county, or are they mostly in the county?
It's both. Um, we have made some arrests for drug distribution of Franklin County residents, and then some of them, um, some of those were, um, drugs coming in that were that, that this was the destination, or just up the road was the destination. So, it, it's kind of a combination.
Uh, Jeff, have you seen any, uh, repercussions of what's going on on the border affecting us up here yet?
Um...
Have you seen any, I mean, down there, they say they just have busloads of people coming into communities, and that is, Border Patrol just dumps them out and say...
As far as people, no, but as far as the, uh, drug flow, yes. Um, we, we're seeing it's, we are seeing some of that. It's a little bit, I, I think they're all, we'll probably continue to see an uptick in, in the drug flow, um, because it's easier to come across now.
What kind of drugs are there mainly?
Mostly what's coming up from Mexico that we deal with is methamphetamine. Um, part of that is the legislature has done a great job the last few years, um, stiffening the penalties... the penalties for, for manufacturing and also put other things in, in place where it's harder to get a lot of the precursors to make meth. And so those things were, were good. But what that did was it pushed production down south of the border. And so that's how it's coming in.
Good update on dog and cats.
David Lee.
Okay. So Road and Bridge crews, we've had three different crews out patching this week, patching our hard surface roads. So they've been, been there Monday, Tuesday. They're out again today and they'll probably be out there the next couple, couple of days also. We still have, there's still a few spots that are too wet to get any patch in. We clean the water out and you can see it seeping back into the hole. So we need to wait a few more days for, for those. But we will catch those as, as quickly as we can. Kilo Construction will begin finishing up their project from last year sometime this week, possibly even today. They're going to start, my understanding, on LaBette, on that approach into Eisenhower Road, get rid of that hump off of the concrete and, and smooth that out. And then they will take care of their some larger areas that they are still on their list for heavy patching. So they will get to those. And then they will later in late April, early May, they'll get to the overlays that we've discussed. And that's LaBette, Montana and Marshall from the city limits out to I-35 will all be overlaid as soon as they get to that here in the next month or so. Jeff and Jeff Walton and I met with Circle Seat Paving, our Chip Seal contractor. We met with them yesterday. We went out and, and helped them scout out a few locations for them to stockpile the material for the project. They are anticipating getting started on that in the June, July timeframe, which is, is great. That'll be earlier than, than we've seen it the past several years. And so that gives, still gives us plenty of time to do what little patching that we have to do. We do have a couple of crossroad tubes that we're going to have to replace. One is a, kind of a specialty tube north of Lane where the Virginia Road curves around and ends up in Vermont Road. There's a, quite a big pipe that we need to replace there. So we're, we have approval to get that ordered. So we'll get that put in. We'll have probably Kilo, once we dig it out and, and set the pipe, compact the material up, we'll have Kilo come in and, and put the asphalt material in there. We just discovered another crossroad tube on Montana Road at the Rock Creek and Montana intersection going to the airport. We had a tube collapse yesterday, late yesterday afternoon. Whenever Jeff and I were out, we, we saw it. And so our guys have already closed the road this morning and are working on getting that replaced. Again, we'll have Kilo come in and patch over that so that we are ready for Chip Seal whenever they get to that project. So that's, that's going on. We also, we have two box culverts that are in need of repair. The first structure's on California Road about a quarter mile south of Thomas up north in the northwest part of the county. That's a laid up stone structure that the water coming into it has busted off one of the wing walls and also undermined part of the stone abutment. And then the other structure is on Delaware Road, south of Finney Road, further down south where we're having additional wing wall issues. And the top plate is having some, some problems also. Excuse me. We have reached out to High Plains to provide us with estimates to repair these. And so as soon as those estimates, as soon as I have a chance to receive those and review them, I will probably be bringing those to you for approval to move forward with those, those repairs. And then finally, I had SCS engineers scheduled for the study session on Monday to run through their landfill expansion evaluation report that they prepared and then talk about next steps moving forward with the permitting process and, and really give you an opportunity to take a deep dive into that. I have had to reschedule that until April 19th. We had a death in the family and I'm going to be out of town on Monday. So that's all, that's queued up, ready to go. We just got to push it back a little bit. And then I am working on several of the things. Derek mentioned that he's been visiting with me. We are actively moving forward or talking about issues at our yard and trying to do some preliminary planning so that when, when the time is right to bring on a consultant to do a site plan, that we have well-developed ideas to get them off on the right foot. So lots of things going on kind of behind the scenes, but all of those things will end up before you here shortly. You happy to answer any other questions?
I was out south of town and I went by the log yard out there and talked to the guy. Really appreciated the county putting in the tubes for him there. And he said one of the biggest problems was the fiber optic line and the ditches. And I don't, what is actually, you know, they have the right of way of the county and then we have these utilities in the right of way themselves. And do we have any recourse on what they do and what they don't do?
We have a permitting process. Years ago, the county used to charge utility companies to put their utilities within our right of way. And we, through that fee, we were able to have a staff person onsite kind of monitoring the construction of those things. That went away, that process went away years ago. We still have the permitting process that gives them direction on how they are supposed to construct those, but we're not able to have full-time onsite inspection. So those utilities are supposed to be buried at a depth that will allow us to do ditch maintenance. But oftentimes, what we're finding is that these utilities that go in, and they have the right to go in our, in our right of way, but they're not buried deep enough. And so that limits our ability to be able to do a lot of ditch maintenance in certain areas, especially in areas with a, with a lot of residential development. There, there's more fiber and power and those sorts of things. And so we can, if we have a project, we can request that they move their utilities. But that is a, that is not a quick process. And generally, whenever those sorts of things happen, it's related to a bridge replacement project or a major road construction project, that sort of thing, where we get, you know, we're acquiring additional right of way or those sorts of things that gives them more room to, to move their utilities. But I can tell you, I can assure you that it is a very significant issue that we deal with on a regular basis. We routinely, well, every ditching job that we do or any digging job, we notify DigSafe. They come out and mark the utilities. But we try to take that a step further to determine the depth so that we know kind of what we're getting into before we put a shovel in the ground. Sometimes they're buried at depth that allows us to do what we need to do. Sometimes we gotta, we gotta be creative in how we work around those.
And Roy, I would jump in. And Dave, David said it very well, but I think it's something that maybe some of our citizens don't realize. The, the utility companies have a statutory right to be there. And it seems like in recent years, more and more, and I understand the policy reasons behind this, but more and more utility companies are getting greater and greater rights. And that can sometimes be to the detriment of, of counties and their public work staff and that, you know, people just think, why aren't they, why can't they clean out our ditches? Why aren't they doing this? Well, it is such a process to get there because as David said, it just, it takes so much time. And utility companies, they, they're not answering directly to Franklin County citizens like David and his staff are. And so they don't have the sense of urgency that we otherwise might. And so it's, I know it's frustrating for David because David came to us from the private sector where things just can happen so much quicker. This is just one of the many areas where our hands are tied and it just, it moves at a pace that is not dictated by us. And that is based on statute. So there's really not a lot we can do. Thank you.
We do, when we know that there's a utility project going on, we do have staff that try to monitor and they will stop, stop by and, and visit with the contractors. Because it's not, you know, it may be an AT&T line, but it's not AT&T putting the, the fiber or line in the ground. It's, it's a third party. And you can, I would be quite honest, the, the local contractors that do that work generally do a good job. But sometimes we get out of town contractors that are here for a short period of time and I don't think the results are quite the same.
I do have a question. The, the going out on Eisenhower, when you're going right out of town and it turns into dirt, at the top of that hill, if, if you have to swerve, it's like a, because it's kind of scary. I mean, it has, if you, if your car went off, you, I, I didn't know if that's just because the ditch, it just has to be that way or, do you know what I'm talking about, right at the side of the road?
You're, you're talking about.
Going south.
Yeah. Where the, where the start of the hill is going down, there's a, there's an entrance.
Yeah.
And, and the way that there's a little bit of an alignment shift.
Yeah. So yeah, if you were going straight, it'd be almost like you'd be going straight to the, off the road.
Yeah. That is, that is an issue. We could put some delineator right there to help people navigate that. So I will, I'll visit with staff about, about doing that. I'm not sure that there's much else we can do because I think the right of way jogs a little bit right there as well.
Commissioners, Commissioner Stotler? Yeah. I had a meeting, just going to Wellsville meeting tonight. Hadn't got the agenda on it yet. So don't know. One, one other thing we've been working on with David and the Solid Waste Authority is to get this grant for Franklin County for a new cargo container. And we've been working on it. And when no fit is possible, I've got several up and David's been working on too, a support letter from the county commissioner for this grant. Whether that would be possible, just that you approve of us asking for this grant. It's no dollar amount. Asking for the commissioner. Just one of the support. I've got some people that use the micro, which is probably mainly what this cargo will be used for until, till it ceases to be. But when it does cease to be, it, it will, it being written in the name of Franklin County, it's their piece of equipment once we're done. Or once it's, it's asked for and received, it is Franklin County's. The old trailer out there we use now for storage, got a full hole, the doors won't work on it no more. And it's, it's, you can't throw anything of any kind of helmets or boxes or anything like that in there because it leaks the lead. And the rest of the solid waste, the other five counties already approved for her, our coordinator to write the grant. And she's got a chance to get a, without going through a big process, there's a small grant for $7,500 that she can get that's a real short type of grant to apply for. It sounds like for pretty well. David's given us a letter recommendation from Public Works as him being the head of that. And of course, I'll sign off as the manager and coordinator and part of Solid Waste Authority. I sign off on grants. So, but that the, that the solid waste applies for. And just asking for a short little letter recommendation and just go ahead and give to David, if the county would want to do one, just saying you approve of it, you're fine with it. And anything you have to ask on it.
Well, yeah, I, I would say, I mean, certainly we could prepare a letter of support, but I would just have your coordinator or, or David or someone.
Yeah, just coordinate with David.
Needs to get me the details so that it's a responsive letter. I just, the name of the grant, the amount, all that. But if you can get that to me, we'll absolutely put a letter together.
It's a pretty, everybody that's done it is, you know, four or five sentences. It's, you know, it's been a long time. Need and issue. And I don't think it's going to be any problem that way. We have a new coordinator and she's trying to go after things that people in the path have it. And so we're trying to work with her. I mean, we, we told her when she took the job, a lot of it she was going to have to take on, on herself to produce. And she's been, she's written a couple of kind of grants for Lynn County already, been successful on one of them, getting them like a 40 some thousand dollar grant and working on another for schools down there. And this one would be, has already been signed off by the other county for her to do it for us. So that's all that. We recognize the grants there and we had no problem with it. That's the main thing.
Commissioner Stotler, I can add just a little bit more to that. Our, our administrator's already written the narrative for the grant. It's very well done. She's just asked us to provide a little bit more detail in a couple of areas, which we provided that information to her. I'll prepare a, a letter of support as well as the Public Works Director. And I'll provide that to you, Derek, so that you can see that. But, so what we're attempting to do is replace the storage trailer. This is a 1972 vintage trailer that we're currently using. And so we're, we're looking to, and it's a 40-foot trailer. We're looking at going with a 45-foot trailer that will sit on the ground. We'll build a bit of a pad for that. And we'll, it will have, much like the one now does, it's got Franklin County on the side and some of those. So I'll visit with Casey about some branding type things. But we'll also, there'll be a promotional component of this as well to get the word out about the, the adopt a bike program, both here locally and then within the five counties. So it, it should be a nice little, nice little deal for us.
You good?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Didn't want to skip over you. Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. Go.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
We have our interview meeting next week for the candidates for the magistrate judge in Osage County. So I've been making phone calls for background checks for the candidates. And the only other thing I had was congratulations to Monica Finch. She did a job for as many years as I can't imagine anybody could do that job for that many years without having burnout. So congratulations to her on her last day.
All right. Mr. Doug?
I was going to ask Janet about the election next, next Tuesday. Is there a bond issue next Tuesday or?
Not next Tuesday. It's May 19th.
Oh, May 19th.
Yep. Out, out in West Frank, no, West Franklin, Wellsville, sorry. So we did get the ballots program for that yesterday. And we've been working with the other counties on rerouting their voters to our, our polling location. So May 19th is the date for that.
Is that what nightmares we made of election you forgot about?
Did you see the look on my face?
All right. Anyone else before we look to adjourn?
Just want to wish everybody a happy Easter this Sunday.
Very good. All right. Was there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor of adjourned, say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.